Thank you, everyone, for coming to our November ninth meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I could for just a moment, in light of Wednesday being Veterans Day, I think it'd be appropriate to observe the moment of silence for all of our veterans, present and past.
That's a good idea, being a veteran myself, so. Only thing I have to say, simplify. Those old Marines. Thank you for that thought. We have one addition I would like to motion on. It's for a materials up at the Philip Stevens property. There was a trash issue there, and I understand we got a call that it's been cleaned up?
I haven't been there.
Okay.
Good.
But I just want for the record, I would, given that you're here, Richard, at some point to, you know, we'll call you up early out of respect for the fact that you probably want to go home early, and just give us a brief report what had transpired in the conversation that you have with those folks.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead, because we're clearly over capacity tonight, I'd like to make a motion that we move Mr. Bov immediately calling our starting of the meeting, and also Mr. Lee to give us the update right off the bat for four minutes, so that we can do that and maybe get closer to capacity.
That's a motion you're?
That's a motion.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Sorry, Mr. Richard, sorry.
Second.
Sorry about that.
I knew where I was.
Yeah.
Brain wasn't working right today.
Hey dude. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to pose? And given the fact that you wanted to do this right off, I think his would be brief. So if you want to wait a minute, go ahead, Richard, give us a brief.
I suppose I could say it's my imposing presence that scared them into doing it, but I don't think so. I was there yesterday. I talked to them, and I talked to the owner, and there were several other people there, and asked them about getting rid of it, told them that it was a concern for the highway commissioner was concerned, and it was a concern by neighbors about the trash, et cetera. And they told me they would have it out of there within two or three days, and I said, "You'd guarantee by the end of the week?" And they said, "Definitely by the end of the week." And I drove right past and didn't even look, so, good.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you for taking your time to come out here, Richard.
So I get out of here, and then you get closer to what the number of people that are supposed to be here, is that correct?
Thanks, Richard. Appreciate you coming out. Ed, or Mr. Bov.
And so I was coming by to check in like I usually do every year. A couple months late this year because of COVID. And then I saw stuff about the local hazard mitigation plan, so I was like, whoa, good reason to come in and say hi, and then answer questions you guys might have about it. It sounds like you have a bunch. So, hi, one. Nice to see everyone again. And, you know, you can ask me about that, or anything you want to talk to me about. Because I could talk about anything, you know, transportation, or anything you want, so.
I'll go first, if you want.
Yeah.
I guess the question that came up as was, at this point, there hasn't been any major developments, was the feeling of the board with regards to the hazard mitigation plan. And the big question was why we can't ultimately just submit what we have and move on. And I know we didn't really get what we felt was a complete answer of why we can't really renew what we have. We know that it is technically a rewrite year. I mean, it's an update year. But I guess the other concern that came up in the midst of the discussion was, this is probably back even when Danny was on the board, we had some issues where we had complaints of townsfolk last time that said they really didn't feel included in the process. Like, how is this process this time around going to be different going forward was one of the concerns. So that's why we kind of pushed it to the side and said, "We want to talk to somebody before we do something different."
I think last time was the town plan rewrite. That's, I think, the thing that people were upset because they felt they might not have been, or had their voices heard, I think, if I remember correctly.
I think we ran into it a little bit during both of them, truthfully.
So, right, because the last time you would have done it is in 2015. You would have done this because these are five years, and this year has expired in January, so.
Okay.
I wish I could say I had a good reason why the standards aren't exactly the same as they were five years ago.
Okay.
But I don't. It's a document that gets reviewed by FEMA, not us. And they're the ones that give their stamp, does it pass muster or not? So the standards that come down are the ones we use when we help towns to update them, or if they go to a consultant or anybody else that's going to update it. They're going to have to do the same FEMA checklist. So that's the reason it can't be exactly the same. I don't, off the top of my head, know the exact differences, what were there last time and this year. I don't think there are a lot of things that are totally different. I mean, you still need to identify the hazards, you still need your maps, you still need your strategies, kind of thing, so. I can't think of something that's changed, that's put on a whole new thing to towns from the old to the new standard.
Who would be writing this, Ed?
So you guys would be writing it, a subcommittee of the town. And how it works is there's two options, so, and let me backtrack a little bit. The local hazard mitigation plan, it's not a requirement of the town to have. The same with a town plan, the same with zoning, the same with anything. You guys don't need to have one, you don't want one. What it does is if, well, one, it helps you plan for disasters and events that might happen, flooding, you know, airplane crash, bioterrorism, even pandemic now. It helps you guys kind of, you know, it builds off the emergency management chapter in your town plan, and it also builds off your local emergency management plan, which is something you do annually.
That's what MATT does annually.
Yeah, okay. So this is a separate thing that really helps you look at your areas in town where you think you have a hazard, and then it like creates like a ball field, like, how do you want to do that, what you want to do. And so it's helpful for town to have a planning exercise if everyone's involved, like you say. Two, there's this thing called ERAF. Do people know what that means? It's the Emergency Relief Assistance Fund, meaning if there's a federally declared disaster in the state of Vermont, the state picks up 75%, and then the municipality has to pay that 25% difference. If you have four things, which is you're part of NFIP, which you guys are, if you have road and bridge standards, which you do, if you have a local emergency management plan, which you do, and then you have this local hazard mitigation plan, those four things give you a 12.5 rate, meaning if you have a disaster, the state picks up 75%. Of the 25% that's left over, the state will pick up that 12.5. So I'm sorry, so the feds pick up 75%, the state will pick up 12%, 12.5%, and then the town's on the hook for another 12.5%. So if you don't have one of those four pieces, your percentage goes down to 7.5. Or 17.5, meaning if there's like a $100,000 damage, 75 will come from the feds. You guys would be on the hook for 17.5% instead of 12.5% of that quarter. I know that's kind of math, but essentially it reduces your payment, the town, the municipality's payment, if there's an event. So that's one reason to have it. The other reason is if you're applying for funding for any type of project, and you identify the project in there, and it's through anywhere, you get priority points to get funding to actually do these projects. And then, I like, I know it just seems counterintuitive, but actually sometimes I think it gives towns more control because if you've spent the time to plan out one of these plans, and you come up with realistic action items and everything, I found that if things do happen, it keeps a lot of the state A and R people and a lot of the FEMA people off your back a little bit because you've taken the time to do it locally, and you're like, "This is what we want, this is our plan." You know, you can't mess with that kind of higher powers.
So if we have something that's already established, and we do,
Yep.
Then is there someone that we have to hire to come in here? Or do we, as a board, say for instance, sit down and look at each section and say, "Well, maybe we could update this," or, "No, that's good enough."
If you wanted to, yes. If you wanted to, you could do this all on your own. You, the way I see where your plan is now, because it's expiring in January, and again, if it expires, it's not like there's a local hazard mitigation force that comes in and, you know, goes crazy. It's just, if there's a disaster event, then that's when you guys are in that period of your rate would be higher. You know, some towns are okay with that. You guys, I believe, and help me out, if you were being asked to be put on the state's application because they would apply, the state applies for a whole bunch of towns, they get the money, and then you guys have a match, like a 20% match on that. I think, does that sound familiar, at least as option, as one option you have? No, okay, all right, so then I'll back up a little more. Because this answers who has to do the plan, or who can do it. I mean, ultimately, you guys can do it. If you want to get a subcommittee together and look at the standards and see if your plan hits or doesn't, you guys could do that easily.
Otherwise, who else would help us? Is somebody from the planning commission?
So.
Regional planning commission?
I'll get to that.
Yeah.
Possibly. It doesn't have to be. So the two avenues I believe you have now are, if you go and want to be part of the state's application for a whole bunch of towns, then what that means is you guys will put out an RFP if you get awarded, and then you can hire whoever you want to hire to do it. That route has a 20% match on the town's part, because they have a match when they apply for it. So how it would work is you would say, "Okay, state of Vermont, we want to be on your application, which includes like probably 50 or 60 towns. We'll get awarded that later next year, so our plan will expire regardless." And then when we get that money, the town, Clarendon, has to come up with a 20, the match, I think it's a 20% match, I believe, and then you guys put out an RFP. And then you decide who would do the work. We would probably bid on it at the RRPC because that's what we do, and we're good at writing these plans, and Stephanie, I don't know if you know Stephanie Burke at all, but no, Stephanie, she's like the best. So, but if you do that, we can't help you put the RFP together, we can't help you with anything because we're going to be bidding on that, possibly, if we want to. Unless, you know, we don't want to compete with the private sector, but nobody else has been wanting to do this. Just because, you know, five, six, $7,000 for a consultant isn't covering their costs to do the work on this. For us, it does, and you guys are members of the RRPC, so you get like, you know, when you do the work, you get special rates. So that's one option. The other option you can do is just, we put money into our, so we also get funding from the state through Vermont Emergency Management to do work with towns. We put in money to help a few towns with local hazard mitigation plans. You guys are one of those, so I don't know if it's because I like you, or because we've, you know, we've worked with you guys, but we have two towns, we've got Clarendon and Mount Holly. Mount Holly we're doing this year, and then we kind of put money aside because we knew yours was expiring in January. And we're like, "Well, if they just want to do it without going through the state process, without the RFPs, without the match, we'll just, we would just do it for you, and Stephanie would do that." And so that offer still stands.
What would be the cost, do you think?
To you guys? It wouldn't be anything. So it's either a match cost to the state, or nothing. So.
So I think that's where we were partially confused too.
Yeah.
Because our letter that came, just so you know, both ways talked about a match, so that's why we were confused too.
What was the other way?
Well, the RFP, or we were going to have to match either way, either match.
I have an email from Vermont Emergency Management about the 25% match due December 4th, like the letter.
Yep, the letter, okay.
But then I also like have emails from Stephanie that there's funding available at RPC.
Yeah.
But I thought that had, there was a match there too.
Yeah, our understanding was there was a match on that too.
There's no match? What's that?
I said, "It just wasn't clarified."
Yeah, it just, I guess it just wasn't clarified, that's all.
No, there is no, it wouldn't be a match on ours, because
Yeah, that was, that was our
It would come right through our emergency management funding.
Yeah, because somewhere I read that there was a match with regional planning.
That was, that was our, and obviously maybe we just got the wires crossed and misunderstood, but.
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't see where there would be a match.
Do you want to get back to us to make sure?
Yeah, I'll get back to you if there is one, because there wouldn't be a reason. If it's in our money and in our budget now, we wouldn't turn around and then ask you guys for a match. I mean, you guys are like members of the RRPC, that's like
That's wonderful news.
Yeah, so, so.
But Stephanie is like, no, because like, I wouldn't see where there would be, so.
To that point, why don't you, you know, we can halt this conversation relative to you getting back to us, whether it's come to our next meeting, or, you know, have some dialogue with Katie, and then we can go from there.
Yeah, there's not, there's no match on that, because
And then I guess my just second follow-up question for that would be, if we move forward, then what's our, what's the timeframe looking like for us? What are you thinking?
So it probably won't get cooking for another, your plan will expire.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So, but Stephanie told me probably by the summertime, we could have it up and running and probably ready to go again, so you might only have a five or six month period.
So, so, something happens, we did have a disaster, and we weren't in compliance, and plan had collapsed.
Yeah.
If we did have Stephanie doing it, and she was in the process of doing it, would there be any clout there to say, "Look"?
There's sometimes a month grace period. If you, if it's like close, I know
I was going to say, I hope with COVID that
Yeah, VEM has always kind of been like, "Well, you know, they're working on it, it's close, and they won't change the rate," so.
Okay.
I can't guarantee that because I'm not the ERAF master.
But, I mean, so personally for me, we just cleared up a lot of what my questions were last time around. So that's, for me anyway, and I know I've done most of the time, so let other guys talk.
And I think that because we have already something that is established, you can work with that and make any changes, so it wouldn't take, wouldn't be a real long process. Yeah, I think for me, once you get back to us so that we are sure that that is in fact
I'm 99% sure, but I will get back to you. Because it's our, it's like the RRPC funds that we've set aside, so. What we would need is a team, a crew of people, like, you know, it's always good to have, you know, planning commission, select board, road, you know, everybody kind of on that because that's the best way to identify the hazards, so.
I know the big thing that the board has just taken a stance against in the past is flood overlays and things like that. We've really taken a strong stance against that.
I know, I know that. I know, I know where you guys come from.
Ever since the barfield issues,
Yeah.
it's building trust back.
I know exactly where you guys are.
Yeah, so, I mean, and I think, I think you have gone a lot way to understand where we stand, so I think
And that's fine.
And I appreciate that, so.
Thanks. I mean, I appreciate you guys being part of the RRPC because, you know, we do a lot on lots of fronts.
And if need be, we won't have to wait to, I'm just putting this out there in case, we won't have to wait to make a decision at the next meeting, maybe we could have a special meeting or a workshop. Is that all right with you guys?
Well, I mean, I'm comfortable making the motion that, provided what Ed has said that the funding is covered, I'm comfortable with saying if that's the case, I'm making the motion to move forward.
All right, and is there a second to that motion?
I'll, I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion?
Just one question, Ed, you can take the plan that we got now, and just kind of almost, I guess I would say for better word, upgrade it a little bit from what it is and still stick with almost what we got, am I correct?
I think so, I think so. I don't, like I said, I'm not sure the difference is, but, you know, what you have now is definitely going to be the building block for
Yeah, because I don't want to see a big expansion.
No, I don't think it's going to change a lot. That's a Stephanie question, really, but it's not, I mean, we've been doing these for lots of towns, so it's nothing like left and right, or like black and white that are seen different, so. She does do a better job on them, so like, she's going to drill, like drill into you about like, you know, I mean, you know, but Stephanie's like, and it's a good thing, so, you know, probably a little more thorough is the word.
But she does listen when you speak.
Yeah, no, yeah, she will.
We're happy, we're happy with me, but.
There's a motion on the floor. We've had some discussion, they've been seconding, and so sort of question out there. All in favor of a motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Do you guys want your, I printed out some, your community reports for Clarendon, would this be helpful? It talks about like ERAF, it talks about, like, some of the stuff, like when you were part of NFIP, your road and bridge standards, is that interesting to anybody?
I'll take one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is from the state's flood ready website.
Keep one in the office, too.
Yeah, it's just helpful to show.
Thanks.
Get enough copies here.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for taking the time, good job.
Thanks, Ed.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, we want to move, Robbie, can you get a hold of, because of what?
Yeah, we've got, we're, we've got to go back, and obviously you are attending now because we went out of order, but I'll make a motion that we approve the minute subject to any correction anyone has.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Next thing would be highway, but. Right.
Let's move on.
So I'll make a motion that we go ahead and move our meeting down to an update on the Cold River berm removal.
All right, is there a second?
Second, Ed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, so.
Okay, so we have Nancy's here, and Shannon's on. Can you ladies hear me?
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay, perfect.
Danny, want to come up?
So we are here, we do have the full board present, and then Danny Pankowski, of course, one of the budding landowners is here. I'll turn a little bit, I'm going to kind of be behind the computer, but I guess we'll let whoever one of you wants to take the lead and give us, start by giving us an update.
I can start. So the update is that, you know, conservationists are said to go back to the funder for additional funding to hire an engineering firm to design the location of the well. And it just happened back in, oh, probably, we went back to the funder in March, and we were approved for some more funding, and then we went and put a bid out to engineering firms to come up with a, they had to do a design for the location of the well, which that's already been done, and then they had to file wastewater system and portable water supply permit, and that's been done. So the big thing we're waiting for now is for Parker Water Wells to get there to do a three-hour, what they call a three-hour blow test. And that will come up with the yield for the well, and it'll also, they'll also have to do some pulse of samples. And there's quite a few samples that they have to pull to make sure that there's no, you know, bacteria or anything in the, you know, in the well. And they have to have five gallons per minute per home. There are four homes that it's going to supply, so we have to come up with 20 gallons per minute. So we're just waiting on Parker's, and Parker's has a lot of people, and he's not the only well driller that has people that are, have no water, so we're really not, he can't really put us at the beginning, you know, I mean, he can't make us a priority. There's people that are priority to Parker's, and most well drillers right now are people that are out of water, so. That's, unless you guys have more questions.
Is there any speculation to the, can they do this in the winter, you know?
Maybe, yes. It's a possibility. Parker did tell me that before the ground freezes, he will definitely get there to do that three-hour blow test at least. But then it has to go back, the samples have to go back to the engineer, and then the engineer has to do the final design, and then, you know, then the well can be drilled. So, I mean, I don't know, I'm not going to say it's definitely out for this winter, but it could possibly be spring.
And then I guess just a follow-up question, following that, Nancy, are we then looking at the starting of the removal of the berms? What's the, once the water system is in, or where are we looking at that point?
Oh, yeah, we have to wait for the water system to be in because it's, you know, we just don't want to start removing a berm when, you know, they don't have their water supply, and we're not exactly sure where that spring is within that berm, you know what I mean? And if, you know, while we're, while we are removing the berm, you know, we mess with that spring, and they have no water, then, you know, that's just not cool. That's just, it can't happen that way, so.
When is the blow test determined?
So what's the question, Danny?
What does a blow test determine?
So the blow test, just question of what that determines, that, is that what actually determines how many gallons per minute the well is going to? Okay, so that determines the gallons per minute, she's saying.
So, but that would mean the well is already drilled.
At that point, is the well drilled?
It'll be drilled, but they can't leave the pump in there. They have to pull the pump back up out because there's going to have to be another design done once they find out what the yield is, then it goes back to the engineering firm, and the engineering firm has to do a second design.
So has there been a well drilled already then? Is that where we're at?
Oh, no.
So that's, that's going to happen in conjunction with the blow test?
Well, they have to drill down, you know what I mean, far enough, you know, to, till they hit the, you know, water, you know, so they can get the samples, and hopefully they'll, they have to drill down until they can get that, to that 20 gallons per minute.
Now, what, I have a
Which we're not likely to get.
Your, which you're
A second design, which will be outlining the storage.
Oh, so the storage is if it can't get to the 20 gallons a minute, is that the theory behind that?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's a lot more complicated than we originally thought, let's just put it that way. That's putting it lightly, maybe.
But once, once that well and everything is installed, is established, that's when we would go to work in the river?
So we're just taking out the berm, we're not doing anything in the river.
Yeah, well, that's what I meant, but.
That's what he's referring to, he means the berm will be removed.
Yeah, so we have the RFP that we're going to put out, you know, anytime, we can put that, we have it drafted. It's been drafted for years, really. But we've worked out all of this other stuff. We closed on the eatment after one of the winters. And we've been working on the well, and we had to get more funding, because it ended up being a lot more expensive than we expected. So, you know, our intention is for the berm to come out this summer.
Not just, uh, not just punching holes in it like we heard at one point?
Danny's just asking for clarification, um, at one point there was plans just to punch holes in it, it is truly coming out, correct?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it it's all dependent on what we get for, um, bids and we only have so much money to go around, so. You know, we're gonna put it out to bid as the whole berm removal and then we'll see what we get.
How many more questions?
I guess not, but.
Leaves you speechless.
Uh, so the problem with the well was it was not, uh. It was actually identified later as a community well rather than a private residence well?
Yeah, exactly, yep.
Has anybody found the original well yet?
I don't, it's, it's a spring, there's a spring, that's what they have, it's a spring.
Do, do they know the exact location of the spring?
Nope.
Do you want me to go up there and find it with the?
And Irene, Irene, the, uh, you just wiped everything out that was on the, on the surface.
But there's piping into that spring, right? So if there's piping, I can locate that with that. Like I did.
Down there on?
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions for the ladies before we let them go?
Uh, is there a, so basically the tentative plan, um, is, uh, a waiting period for the well. And then, um. Can't really, uh, am I correct in saying you can't really, uh, schedule anything until that's confirmed?
Well, we can put out the R F P for the berm removal.
So you can do all?
We can't actually like award a contract until we have the well in because. The well could be, or the spring could be affected by the berm removal, so, you know, we can't do that.
But if, let me ask you the.
Nancy and I, you know, talk regularly about this project.
Let me ask you, if, if you, if we can establish.
At least put out the R F P and see what we get for.
If we can establish where the locat- the exact location of the spring is. And we find that it would not be affected if we remove those berms. Could we step up the berm removal?
Yeah. I chime in on this, what she's getting into is if you remove the berms. And you have an event such as like close to Irene and stuff like that, you will have problems. Is that all, that's where everything, right, from there. And all that land's been preserved for, for six acres. For non-development.
From the Eastment, you mean?
Right, Eastment, okay.
But I think that when your dad, when I went up there right after Irene, your dad thought that it was on the more northern section. Because that's where he remembers the piping in the ground. Uh, we'll have this conversation.
Um, I'm just wondering where the, uh. Discrepancy versus the private residence versus a community well ended up being established?
When we went to get the permit, we were told that it was, um. You know, much more complicated. Because we did look into getting a permit early on and we were told how much it would cost and. You know, what it would look like and what we would need to get and then when we actually went to get the permit, we were told that we needed to hire an engineer to do a design. Um, because it was four dwellings, which was different than what we were originally told.
So is that from a state agency that you guys were told that then? Is that from the state level?
Yes.
Okay.
You have anything else, Dan?
No.
Good.
All right.
Okay, I think that's it for questions. We thank you, uh, thanks for coming on and and being a part of our discussion and sharing the update with us.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Good night, Matt.
And do you have any follow up?
I just have a concern on why. We're. Responsible now for a community well when it's actually always been a private well and maybe somebody else just. Other places just sort of tapped on at their own accord.
Well, I think that.
Or a private spring.
My interpretation of what they're saying is because, I mean, I was here from the start of this whole discussion too, I don't, were you on the board at that point?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we were told when, when they initially came and asked for, the town kicked in, what was it, ten thousand?
Right.
Off the ballot. When, when they initially came and asked for that, they said that the well was gonna feed four houses. We were told that, sitting right here, I think if you go back in the minutes.
What happens when, when they went to the state, the state.
The state's the one who changed the game, is what she's saying.
If it's not a single resident, it all of a sudden becomes a municipality. Type system.
So basically.
Because it's more than one.
My interpretation of it is it's ultimately, it's, it sounds like they didn't do enough homework.
Exactly.
That's, that's what it sounds like to me.
Exactly.
I mean, and maybe.
Well, I'm just wondering, there's some, there's some responsibility here in the whole thing with the landowner also. Building a community, a pu- a community well on a spring.
Your point was as houses were built, they added on to the same spring.
They added on to the same well.
Over the years.
And branched it out.
Over the years.
Which isn't, really shouldn't be our responsibility to cover that.
Unfortunately, because of, over the years, how it evolved. The town can't all of a sudden because it wants to remove those berms and make that location. A little bit safer for the houses that are now where they are, your house and neighbors and stuff. Um, we're trying to get a decision made townwide.
Sure.
So what is established now, we can't change that, we can't have each one of those structures in that location drill their own well. Um, I don't think we could anyway.
Well, I'm just wondering how, how up through the years, not only with wells, but how were those, the wastewater taken care of on that property? Was it, did we just plunk a trailer there and then we just throw a couple, a tank and a couple lines in? They're not quite that old, I don't believe.
I don't know. The oldest house is that one that you have apartments in, right?
Two hundred, yep. Days back to eighteen hundreds.
Okay.
Right, eighteen hundreds. And then the other, the other two, um, there was a mobile home put in in seventy-three. And another one behind it not long after. And then it's six, sixty-four.
Yeah, which is still.
Another house.
Which seventies are still wastewater permits.
But, well, to some extent, but I think the town, uh.
Still a pretty good extent because.
It may have been, may be that it's a failure of the town to not better police that.
Right.
Well, don't forget zoning didn't come to town until.
Right.
The eighties.
But also don't forget that that's, that was all one person's property as it is still now.
Right, right.
So the guy, the individuals.
Oh, and yeah, I understand how it comes up through, no big deal, um. But I'm just seeing.
What may happen, in my opinion, is if they can't drill a well that has whatever the gallons were.
Saying twenty, twenty.
Yeah, they would, maybe, they may have to put two wells in.
Right.
Well, the way they're gonna get around that, they're gonna actually put in storage tanks.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Big storage.
And I, and I, I think she's wrong on this twenty because I was told it's gonna be, with that theory, I'm actually double it to forty. I don't even think they.
I mean, so I guess from my perspective on Danny's question. And from what I remember from sitting on the board, I don't think that there was, in my opinion, any dishonesty, of course, back then we were dealing with your father, I mean, I don't, I don't see any. Dishonesty or anything because again, my memory was, because remember, when we had the initial discussion, there was a lot of talk about, well, what size line has to go to the, because. There was discussion about how many houses had to be fed and how, what size line had to go where.
All lines gotta be replaced too.
So I, I, I mean, my perspective again is that they, they knew all that from the get-go, is my interpretation. And what, when we asked that clarifying question of her, it sounds to me like they didn't talk to the right person at the state because the state changed it mid-game. And the state told them one thing.
Yeah.
Which, how many times do we run into that? The state said one thing, they went back and said, here's our permit.
Sure.
And the state said, nope, now you gotta do a commercial system.
Right, because I think that when they, you're right, to your point, when they initially discussed with the state, well. There's a, uh, this well or or spring feeds, probably just mentioned your dad's house. And so this is their understanding and so that's what they went, you know, by, but now all of a sudden, when they say, well, there's.
I think.
Three or four properties.
No, well, no, I, I think.
No, they knew there's.
No, they knew that. What I, what I think they got told initially is, yes, you can apply as a private system for four houses and then. When they went back, the state said, no, you can't do that, now you've got to do a commercial system for four properties.
I can't believe the state would do that.
I think you're looking at, I, I truly believe, my interpretation of what they're saying, I truly believe they always knew there was four, four. Place, because again, my memory of, and I know this is like, what, three years ago now or four years ago, however long it's been. My remembering is why they came to us and said, would you be willing to put, because we put it on the ballot, ten thousand dollars. Would you be willing to put ten thousand dollars on because this is gonna cost us more than what we thought? Which.
I remember that.
I sit probably in the same shoes as both of you feel because the reality is what I'm scared of and what. I don't think she would totally come out and say tonight is if they use money up, they're gonna cut back the other part of the project.
Sure.
The other part.
Basically said that already.
The other part of the project is really what we were aiming for, we wanted the berm.
Exactly. Now. And that's what I don't understand is, and I told, I think I've told the rest of you, Shannon told me that. The river's taking care of it and I'm like, that wasn't the deal of the program. The program was for removal of the material.
Yeah.
Eliminating.
See how much more materials in there?
The program was the removal of the pe- of the material that was put in in the mid-nineties.
Cause that's what they put, the Army Corps pushed it up, right, in the nineties?
Uh, it was a combination of apparent, of A and R and whoever was in the river.
They, yeah.
With their, with their oversight.
That was Danny Allard was using his machine and the, uh, National Guard out of Rutland. Was bringing it over to the airport.
Right, right, it was for that project.
The reason they were so up on that was because they wanted to extend the runway to the airport.
Material.
And they free material.
Cause at that time.
But my point, my point is Irene didn't, didn't really do much to your well, wherever it may be. It hasn't really affected it. So by removing the berms, how would that affect it?
Well, that's why I was just saying to Cash, I remember having the conversation.
Those, those were done in the nine, the berms were done in the nineties and. That was a, before that, that was a floodplain over there.
I remember the conversation with your father.
Yeah.
Standing there watching them dig, you know, all this stuff out of there and your dad saying that. He wasn't a hundred percent sure, his, your father's saying he wasn't a hundred percent sure, but he thought it was on the more northern. Boundary because they were afraid that if the river did overflow, it would affect that spring.
Right.
Um, so.
It's gotta be gravity of some.
Basically here tonight to get an answer for them, are they gonna remove, get the berms removed? Which there, that was the main objective, the whole thing.
You got a shaky answer.
Got a real shaky answer.
In my opinion.
Well, we've been getting shaky answers for two and a half years.
Oh, I agree.
It's, it's getting a little.
And then when I had.
Ridiculous and then the rate of inflation's gonna just chip away so much that.
Sure.
Um, it's gonna be ridicu- you know, it's gonna get to the other end.
I, the other thing that I'm interpreting too, and maybe I'm reading into it wrong, they're hesitant to award that and even put that R F P out there.
Oh, yeah.
Because they don't, they don't even know.
All right, why don't we just hold the whole thing, hold the whole thing, because there really isn't gonna be much in the end. And let them fend for themselves on their own community well.
Well, the, the other question here, maybe I shouldn't bring this up, and Cash, maybe you had an answer, maybe not, you put in that well as a community system. Is that gonna have to have the wellhead protection area like the school? Does school have to have a thousand foot perimeter?
And they're gonna tell us after the fact.
Actually, the engineering, when they did the engineers, they did, they had the setbacks and stuff like that for that.
Oh, okay.
When they engineered where it was gonna be?
Yeah, because they had to measure the burns in the buildings, across the road, and animals and stuff like that, if, you know, a certain distance.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the, in my opinion, the train's out of the station, I think you gotta see what happens, but I, I don't have a whole lot of hope. That when everything shakes out, that you're gonna see much really get done in the river.
I personally would like to find that spring because. If, I think that maybe you don't have to even jump through all those hoops, if the spring is located up.
How do they even know if it's in the, basically in that floodplain?
It's in, it's in the lower, uh, of the elevation, it's in the lowest part of that area.
But the lowest part is to the north, right behind where the. Cause I've walked all through there.
Yeah.
And I know.
Over that bank.
So I wanna go down and see, can't locate, that's.
Yeah. How is that pulled out of that? How is it pulled, is it pulled out or is it gra- it can't be gravity fed then?
I honestly don't know.
Well, there's obviously not a pump on it, we're gonna have a pump somewhere, Cash.
There's gotta be a pump pulling it somewhere.
There's a pump down the cellar of the house.
The old house or?
So that's pulling, that's gonna pull.
So that's gotta pull, basically.
Yeah.
So as long as it keeps sucks, you know, keeps the pipe full, it's just pulling as it needs to.
And I don't know if it's even clay tile or what it is coming from that spring.
I, before, yeah, I wouldn't dare to say or make a statement that. If putting in this community well is gonna chip away so much at that, doing the berms. I would almost rethink it. I'd wanna, I'd want a number before of this total community system.
Do you remember, between any of us, do we, do we remember what the initial award for the, the whole project was?
That was a hundred.
Was it a hundred?
Yeah.
I couldn't, I can't remember.
Yeah. Right, right, around there, it may have been some change, ninety-five or a hundred and five.
And then we kicked in ten.
I don't know.
And then they had, and then they had some sort of a match program.
They were matching the ten, I believe.
For twenty.
Cause the well is gonna be like, not, not more than, it was less than twenty.
Is what it was supposed to be initially.
I think that.
But now for all the centuries.
Never coming in like ten, twelve thousand.
Right.
The well.
Let's, uh.
Now that's gone.
I wanna move this along. What we'll do is, we'll do a little investigating into our minutes.
Well, I just don't wanna play the game of.
Did you get any written material? Did you keep any written material out of that? At a, at a, when we've, um.
No, anything would be in the minutes.
I mean, the only other thing I can do, it, there's been so many emails over it.
Right.
I mean, you can dig back through our emails and see what's in the email. And I, I don't, I don't ditch any emails, so I've got them all, I just have to dig through the.
And Heather was.
She was the point person at the time.
Yeah, yeah, she was actually the point person, so.
Dealing with, uh, at that point it was Nancy and whoever else.
Shannon.
So we're thinking back three years?
Yeah.
Oh, at li- yeah.
Yeah, it's three years.
So we can, we'll do a little investigating. And for, as far as tonight's concerned, we'll.
Yeah, we're, we're set for tonight, no big deal.
Moving right along, Dan.
Yep. Thank you.
Hate to do that, but it's football season.
Oh. I might wanna speak a little bit longer.
I might wanna speak a little bit longer.
I don't watch it anyway. Some people do. Thanks, Danny.
Oh, thank you.
When we find out some information, we'll.
Yeah, no problem.
Get to you.
It just sort of right now, it's in a sta-, it's a stagnant rate right now.
Mm-hmm.
Till we figure that out.
Hi, Wade, you got anything for us?
Uh, just a update. We've, road crew, we've been, uh, getting some of the winter grading done. Um, we did purchase a leaf blower and that seems to be working very well.
Um, I got a question on that.
Yes.
What's the objective of a leaf blower?
Well, blow leaves.
I, I watched it, I watched it from Shoesbury doing it and I think I just, my, my hands-on opinion is it's counterproductive.
How's that?
It was more or less pushing all the debris and leaves into the ditches.
Yeah, but Danny, when you go back through your ditch and you blow your ditch back out, it's actually cleaning your ditch back out. When I go through and push the leaves into the ditch.
Yeah.
I blow it back out of the ditch.
Yeah.
Where you can. There's spots, there's spots you can't. You're correct.
Sure, sure.
But most places, so if you take your time.
Yeah.
And you do it, it opens the road up for the, the fall grading. And then you go in that ditch, you clean it out, it might save you two years from having to go back and re-get you with the excavator.
So you guys focusing on the dirt roads with that then? Is that the focus right now?
Right now. What it does is it takes the leaves off the shoulder so actually the grader can get some of that material that hasn't been getting, some of it, not all of it.
So the long-term hope is so we don't have to do what we did on East Timoth in the spring where we had to go in and clean the, clean the edges off, hopefully?
As much.
Okay, cause I know the road.
You still got the sod there, so you know, it's a management thing from now, now on to.
Yeah, that was what, was that through the planning commission that paid for that or whatever?
Mm-hmm. Grants and aid.
Well, I gotta disagree with you. You got sod because you have gravel that you sanded for two years or a year and continuously dumped more so on some roads than other roads. So it builds up a little berm.
Talk about like on East Timoth, is that what you're talking about?
Any of them. Basically, it's just common sense. From doing yard work, you can see what happens. Look at all the edges of your roads. They all build up over the years from where the town trucks throw all the sand that they put on. You know, an hour before.
So what's the solution to it?
I'm just saying it. I just think it's ironic to buy a leaf blower when it's hard for the, seemed like when I was on the board, it was hard for the town crew to keep up with maintenance of, of the equipment we had. And now you're adding another one and then I'm, I don't, I don't know the, um, stipulation on the whole thing, but do we have to get a tractor for that also or we're using existing equipment to?
We're using, what we did is we, we're set it up on a skid, skid pallet. We actually got framework and steel for a, a skid. So a forklift of any type, whether it be our payloader or if you're somewhere's down the road, you had another type of piece of equipment that had forks, anything with pallet forks can run that machine because it's self-sufficient.
So it's got a motor on it? I haven't seen it yet.
It's all self-contained.
It's got the motor on it.
I was just watching Shoesbury, we were there and I was just sort of.
How are theirs mounted?
Uh, they mounted on the back of a track, uh, agricultural tractor.
We got the one that's so, fully self-contained, it has its own twenty, twenty-six horsepower motor. Where we're not, we could've got one with a hydraulic driven off the payloader.
Sure.
But didn't wanna run the hydraulics and wear the payloader out. Uh, you know, on that stand.
Oh, I agree.
Loaders at a lot more RPMs.
Like I said, I just think it's one of the, it happened to be a state grant and it happened, you happened to get it. Now what you did is you burden, a long-term burden on the town, on, with more equipment on the town, it's more like the grain.
How's the grain?
It's a similar scenario there.
In the words.
The town sorta had to inherit it.
The long-term.
The long-term.
What we ended up with.
Yeah, yeah. It's, uh, you can't look at the one-year, two-year, you gotta look at the ten or fifteen-year scenario on this.
That's what we're looking at when we bought this leaf blower is you take a ditch and after composting years, a year's of compost that sets in that ditch. If we can keep that rock, there'll be a lot longer life of the ditch. To be more efficient.
I agree with that.
Long-term.
I agree with that. Don't see, with all the other things you do on your roads, a leaf blower being the ultimate.
And you know what my projec-, my projection is down the road? I mean, probably next eight, ten years, probably with our water quality issues with everything. We're gonna come up with a piece of equipment such as a leaf blower to blow snow off a road instead of plowing and sanding and salting and all that stuff.
Oh, sure, sure. There's other ways to, other ways to do it, definitely. But yeah, I just, uh, I just thought it was a little, a piece of equipment that was just sort of creating more burden than it would be.
But it was grant money, right?
No, not only, yeah, it's grant money, but I know, I see Dan saying, I mean, it's the long-term.
In the long-term.
You know, in the long-term, but you, we've only had, we've only had it a week and what we've already seen that what is done. And we're taking out material that's never been blown out before. And next year, when you go through there, you'll have a one-year supply of material that's gonna be cleaned out and the, the payloaders going down through there is not gonna have to go slow and it's gonna be beneficial. And we're, and the other issue is, and why we got the grant tool along with that is the water quality issues.
Right. Well, that's why they're pushing it, right? The MR, it's connected to MRGP and all that stuff?
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, for your phosphorus and nitrates. And yeah, anything that's composted, it turns into a, you know, phosphorus and nitrate issue.
Have anything else, Cash, under?
All I have.
All right, anything else, Dan, that you wanna?
No, no, I just, like I said, that was my, uh, just a partial take on, um, from being on the board in the past with the guys down there, not being able to keep up with maintenance and repairs.
Uh, because we have a couple of road crew members sitting right here, I just want you guys to know that there's a lot of people in town that appreciate the work that you guys are all doing. You may not understand that, but we hear it here all the time and we pass whatever through to Cash.
I think you're doing a great job.
They're doing a great job now. Even people that are from out of town that use East Timoth and West Timoth roads, they say that they haven't seen them in such good shape, so, good job. All right, uh, warrants are right here. Anybody wants to come see how we're spending town money?
Think they gotta go to Cash, don't they?
Ready, Cash? All right. Down in the new business, uh, we wanna sign that MRGP grant.
I've got an amendment form basically saying we have our road erosion inventory completed on time.
Okay, and that's to be signed by the select board chair. Want to make a motion?
And of course it has a fee.
This is what you guys did back in the summertime, right, for them? I'll make the motion that we authorize, uh, the chairman to sign the amendment, uh, on behalf of the board.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. And the Conservation District, um, we had this conversation. That's when Ed was here. Um, the Herald Association bankruptcy. And that's the road that's up, uh, that property is up on, um, yeah, Quarterline Road.
What is it, a metal?
So the Herald Association, um, it was brought to our attention, filed for bankruptcy and so when that happens, if they have any delinquent taxes or anything of the such, legally we cannot pursue a tax sale. Um, we were reached out to by Ryan Smith and Carbine. Uh, actually, they reached out to Bill Blumer directly, um, looking for the select board to sign a stipulation of consent allowing the Herald Association's, um, the representative to sell, um, they're basically liquidating, liquidating their assets uh, with the understanding in, in the document provided to you that, uh, the Town of Clarendon, um, be paid.
Be get paid first.
Property taxes first.
Yeah, we get paid first.
But in order to do that, because they have delinquent taxes currently, um, you would need to approve, uh, allowing them to sell the property, basically. So Bill Blumer has looked it all over. Um, I confirmed all of the dollar amounts are accurate. Um, we're not talking a lot of money either, but.
So Bill has recommended we sign it?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're first on the list of them?
Yeah, basically, so basically what it is, um, part of it right here is Town of Clarendon holds first priority statutory lien for the real estate taxes, uh, in the amount of, there's two years' worth. So it's a thousand seven dollars and ninety-eight cents and then the other year is eight eighty-three thirteen, or fifteen. And basically what it says is we're gonna, when the, if we approve that it can be sold, we get that money first before we provide a clear title, basically. Which to me is a no-brainer. I mean, if we're gonna get, if we're gonna get the money first, that, I mean, why wouldn't we allow it to be sold? It's better than sitting and getting nothing, so. I'll make a motion that we authorize, I think it's just one person, so I'll say authorize the chairman to sign, um, the, what do you wanna call it, the bank stipulation, um, regarding the Herald Associates.
Say a second for discussion. All right, um, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Um, Heidi, do you have anything you wanna? Katie, is there anything you would like to, uh?
Um, just me, Cash and I are working on wrapping up reimbursement for Better Roads Grant and Grants and Aid for Quarterline Road, so hopefully have that done by next week.
And that will have the MRGP project satisfied for that, right, Cash? I mean, that's the, that was the whole point.
Yeah.
But that was the highest priority in the town, right?
Yeah, we had until, what, two thousand twenty-five to have it updated to what we did for the project.
So between now and twenty twenty-five, it's not like they're gonna come in and tell us we gotta do more to it?
We're pretty ahead on the.
We're ahead of it.
So.
Ahead of it all.
As long as they don't change the rules partway through.
Uh, they never do.
Oh, that's bound to happen. Whoever gets in must be bossed. We knew that. We very dealt with that.
Yeah.
The airport.
Yep. All right. If there's no questions, uh, we have select board members' concerns and then executive session so that Bill can turn off his machine. So Bob or Cash, do you have any concerns?
I'm set.
I'm set for tonight.
Me too.
Um, I think just, uh, huge props to all of the individuals who worked last Tuesday and, um, the office staff that all, my understanding is all had to chip in because of the amount of mail received over the course of two weeks, um, you know. I'll go on record as my personal opinion. I hope that's the one and last time we have mail-in, mail-in voting, but, uh.
I'm sorry, I didn't mention that something had come down from the state level saying that they were looking to have the same mail-out things for March's election.
Oh, boy.
So stay tuned.
Well, you know what? I'll make a motion then that this board authors a letter to the Secretary of State expressing our displeasure with mail-in voting and the desire for mail-in, mail, voting to go back in person.
Right. Second.
Ready for discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Make that unanimous.
Do we have a hundred and two percent like some other places?
Anybody who, I mean, the fact is, anybody who does not wanna vote in person has the authority to request an absentee ballot in the state of Vermont.
Exactly.
There is no point in universal ballots being mailed to everybody.
Look at how much fun they had.
Do you want that done like this week or come March?
I, I would say sooner than later.
Just wanna make sure what the timeline is.
And then do you want us all to sign it?
Yes.
Or amend that motion?
I'll amend it unless everybody's agreeable to that.
I'll second it also for the amendment.
Okay.
Agreeable to me.
Okay, so all in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It was unanimous. All right, entertain a motion that's going to executive session.
So move.
Second.
All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?